I am going to go ahead and call this meeting, uh, joint meeting of the Southbridge School Committees Budget Subcommittee and the Southbridge School Committee to order. I will go ahead and do roll call. Uh, Kathy LaPurriore is not present. Uh, Frank Yopinski.
Present.
And Andrew Murch, present. We do have a quorum. Um. We'll move on to agenda item number two and pledge allegiance to. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
One nation under.
All right, so now we're going to move on to agenda item number three and my phone will load the agenda again. What? All righty. All right, uh, chairman's announcements. Um, so Maine, I do wanna, I do appreciate you signing on board. Catherine here, I could say the same thing. Um, it's the first time we've had a subcommittee in quite some time. Usually this is where we go through line transfers and any budget requests, um, that would normally happen within a functioning school district, uh, where the, the school committee has power. However, since we don't have that authority of figure pointing this to training specifically on the, the, broader scope of the budget and the finer details, um, is gonna be the best course of action moving forward. So that's the full intention on what I plan on doing with this subcommittee, um, and I hope that the chair of the school committee moving forward, as more get created, I hope that that's their main goal as well, and I think that's gonna help us, um, move forward as a school committee, um, as we learn to be able to transition to pow- uh, taking authority.
Mm-hmm.
Next agenda item is to watch Southbridge School Committee meeting from twelve fourteen twenty-one in regards to the MSC Training Seventy on Chapter Seventy, presented by Tracy Novick and discuss. This training is the same training that is given at the MSC Joint Conference every year. It is a requirement once you are elected. This is one of those course requirements you have to take. Uh, she catered this specifically to Southbridge, so that way we'll have a better local understanding.
Great.
So just bear with me as I fast forward through from process and procedure.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Four ninety-five out to the connected river valley. Um.
Too far.
A whole minute.
Is there any member of the public who would like to address the school committee?
Who's that guy? Right? I feel bad. I feel bad for him.
Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move on to agenda item number four, chairperson's announcements. Um, fortunately, I do not have any announcements for this evening other than welcome to Ms. Tracy from Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Um, so with that, we're gonna move on to the agenda item number five, presentations. This is seventy on chapter seventy by Ms. Tracy Novick.
Good evening. It's good to be here with you all. It's, it's on, huh? Okay. Maybe I just think, maybe I just think it should be louder than it is. So I'm glad to be with you all this evening. Um, one of the, uh, things that I do for the association, um, as, a number of you know, I'm actually the field director for Central Massachusetts. I have everything more or less east of four ninety-five out to the connected river valley. Um, but you are in luck because I also happen to be the one who specializes in school finance. Um, and so I'm glad to have an opportunity tonight to have a conversation with you, um, about in particular how state funding impacts your district, um, how it comes together, but then also what that ends up meaning in terms of how your district, um, funds itself over and above the chapter seventy program. And yes, we're gonna do this with Legos because I think that that potentially can give you a visual. Um, so we talk a lot in education about chapter seventy. Um, we use it as sort of a shorthand. And when we talk about chapter seventy, the shorthand that we're using is we're talking about Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy. It actually is the general law that covers school funding in Massachusetts, um, is chapter seventy of the Massachusetts General Law. And I've given you here the opening section of Mass General Law, Chapter Seventy and Section One, because it outlines what it is that actually is, um, happening within MGL seventy, which is that this section of the law, and generally speaking, the intent of the legislature, um, is for the state to have a system that applies to the entire state of Massachusetts in which there is a, what it calls a fair and adequate minimum funding per pupil. Um, and then there is a standard calculation across the state as to then how that funding comes together, um, in terms of the balance between local funding and state funding. So that is effectively what Mass General Law, Chapter Seventy, does within that chapter. Um, but it also is effectively then what the funding of chapter seventy, the shorthand that we use it for, um, is actually happening within, for those who are hap- for, uh, for the districts that use it. So in other words, when we talk about chapter seventy, we're just simply talking about K through twelve, state funding for education. Um, it certainly is one of the pieces of lingo that we tend to use, um, within Massachusetts education. So as we go through this, by the way, if, if as we go through, you have questions, by all means, please stop me at any point. Um, there are parts of this that are more complicated than others, and I'd rather that if something were unclear, you felt that you could stop me at any point. So the first thing that happens, um, when the state actually does this calculation, and in fact, going back to the creation of chapter seventy, which happened in nineteen ninety-three as a result of the education reform law, um, is that the state put together a list effectively of what it takes in order to educate a child in Massachusetts. Um, and this is a list that I'm sure that if you sat down and had to come up with a list of what you needed in order to run a school district, you would come up with some of these same kinds of things, right? Everybody thinks of teachers. Eventually, we remember that we probably need a building. Um, but then you also need things like to keep the lights on, to keep the building heated. Um, it is good to have other kinds of services besides teachers. You do need some oversight of the educational system, and then we also need things like health insurance. Um, so this is actually what the list is. I put this over on the side so you can actually see what the subdivisions are that are within this. What the state has done is they have calculated a dollar amount for each of those categories per pupil, and then taken those together, and that is what actually then becomes the base foundation rate. Now, those internal dollar amounts vary a bit according to, um, that student's grade level in school. And so effectively then, um, year by year, what, th- there is a, um, an issuance of a foundation base rate that the state says here is the fair and adequate minimum per pupil amount for students who are in, as you see here, pre-K, kindergarten if it's half-day, full-day kindergarten, elementary, middle, and high school. Um, you will notice, of course, that there's some variation among them. Um, generally speaking, this has to do with different assumptions about different calculations within them. Obviously, the vocational rate, um, is the highest, making a nod to the need for smaller class sizes, um, and also the need for more expensive equipment. So that's what that is. Now, to this base foundation rate, the state then acknowledges two additional costs. Um, it acknowledges the fact that English learners have additional needs that need to be funded, and it acknowledges that low-income students have additional needs that need to be funded. So to each student who has that base foundation rate, who is also then low-income and English learner, or both, there is an additional increment that is placed on top of that, thus the Legos. Um, and for FY twenty-two, the current fiscal year, the rates for English learners are what you see here. Now, notice that this is subdivided by the grade level that the students are in. Um, this is, um, the first thing that I'm going to flag for you, as something that is changing as a result of the Student Opportunity Act. Um, so up until the passage, not just the passage of the SOA in two thousand nineteen, but up until the implementation of the SOA and FY twenty-two, um, these rates all were changing only by inflation. There's an inflation rate which is actually applied to the foundation budget every year. But as part of the Student Opportunity Act, one of the changes that is going to be happening is first of all, within the base foundation rate, so the previous slide, the incre- there's going to be a, a bigger increase within those categories attributable to health insurance. We know that health insurance costs are significantly higher than the average foundation, uh, average inflation rate. And then the, the second thing that's going to be changing is an acknowledgement that the cost that we have assumed effectively for English learners, um, is higher than what has been included here in the foundation budget. And so these numbers are gonna be increasing over and above the inflation rate over the next five years. Yes?
Uh, two quick questions.
Sure.
One is health insurance. We're talking about health insurance for students or for teachers?
Health insurance for your, for your employees. And that's part of the calculation of the base foundation rate. The fact that you as a district have to supply health insurance for your employees is part of that calculation.
Great. And then the other question is, how long do students, how long are students considered English learners? Are they considered English learners their full break?
For as long as they're con- they're actually tested as English learners. So students in Massachusetts effectively, when they take the access test, eventually test out of in- of being considered an English learner according to the state.
So when they get a certain proficiency level?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and that is, that is the calculation that's actually used here, is that those numbers are what are included. Um, to that point, though, let me note that you'll notice that there's a differential in terms of the dollar amount here. Eventually, what is gonna happen over the period of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act is that eventually the, the category that is going to be the highest dollar amount is actually the high school students. And this, of course, is acknowledgement of the fact that if you have a student who is an English learner in high school, um, you first of all have a significantly shorter period of time with that student kind of left. And secondly, also, in some cases, it may actually be more challenging for that student to actually achieve proficiency in English, not always, but in some cases. Um, the acknowledgement there is that it can be more expensive to ensure that that student has the support that that student needs. Um, so eventually, that is going to be a shift that you'll see happening over the next five years in terms of the rate for the English learners. And then the third thing that is changing as a result of the Student Opportunity Act is the poverty calculation. This again is an increment that's put on top of the base foundation rate for any student who is considered low-income within your district. Now, there's been a number of changes to how that is counted, um, over the past, say, five years or so. Um, currently and moving forward, um, so for FY twenty-three, let's say, not in this current year, but FY twenty-three, what it will be is it will be all students who effectively receive state services. They're in Mass Health, they're in SNAP, um, they're in TANF. Um, those students are already in a, a state database that is cross-referenced with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's database. Um, and when there is a match, those students are counted as low-income. As part of the Student Opportunity Act, a responsibility that was put on the department was for them to find a way of capturing more of the students who actually were really poor. In many cases, it, there, there certainly have been cases in which students were not being found within those databases. Um, so what hap- has happened for the, the year going forward, not this current fiscal year, but for next fiscal year, is that the state has provided for a way for the, for districts to, um, allow for families to fill out a form. That they, the districts effectively have, um, gone through their own roles and said, we have some families who we think may actually be, this may be applicable to. Those students can fill out, those dis- families can fill out a form, and if in fact it is the case, those families will then be added to this list. Um, so there has been an increase actually in the low-income count, both for the state and also for many districts as a result of that. Now, the thing that's happening here is that over the next five years, again, you will see these rates increase really actually very substantially. Um, eventually, category twelve here is going to be equal to the middle school rate of the base foundation rate. Thus, effectively, a student who is low-income in a district which has the highest concentration of poverty will be counted effectively kind of double the amount, um, in terms of the foundation. Yes?
Excuse me, um, so I was under the assumption that low income was determined based on your free and reduced lunch rates?
So that was originally the case until two thousand seventeen. Um, so that for a very, very, very long time was the case, that it was based on who had filled out a, a form for free or reduced lunch. What happened was, as a result of a revision in the federal school lunch law, um, districts that have had, that had a high rate of students who were considered free or reduced lunch could, um, go, move to community eligibility, which was the district then actually set itself up with that matching program of we've got students who are in Mass Health, we've got students who effectively are considered low-income from other categories. If those rates were high enough, um, the district could make, potentially make the math work such that they could provide free lunch for all of their students. As a result of that federal law, a number of the larger urban districts moved for, pretty quickly to community eligibility, which was great, except it meant that they stopped collecting free and reduced lunch forms. And that had happened two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. The state started to get a little edgy because they were kind of running these two categories then of low-income of like the districts that were counting and the districts that were still kind of sitting on the previous count. And in seventeen, the state said, that's enough. We can't keep doing this. Everyone is moving to their community eligibility counts. So doesn't have any impact on what we're doing for lunch, but we're gonna do this database matching for every district, and that's what's going to make the change. Um, now, what that meant, which sort of, I guess, is implied with the change that's happening now, is that there were dis- there were substantial number of districts and frankly, the entire state, lost kids who were low-income, right? There were families that might have filled out the form but weren't actually signed up for Mass Health, or didn't, didn't actually ever sign up for SNAP benefits or that kind of thing. A bunch of those districts complained to the state and said, we've got kids that we know are poor, they're not actually being counted. Um, and so part of the Student Opportunity Act when it was passed in nineteen was effectively to go to the department and say, look, you gotta figure this out. Like, it's not okay for us to have this kind of system. Um, the state then kind of ran a two-year stopgap of you either get what was your free and reduced lunch percentage or your community eligibility count, whichever is higher. Um, they did that in twenty, twenty was kind of a flat year anyway. They did it for this year. That's actually what's happening right now. But then for twenty-three, they've already implemented this. Yes, that counts, but then also districts can go out to the families that they think aren't actually being captured, have them fill out a form and actually put those, get those put through the database as well.
Thank you.
Yes. And that has been a difference in terms of the count. You're gonna see that in a, in a second, actually, because I have your data here. Um, so note, by the way, that this is particularly progressive towards the end. This is intentionally designed to be particularly supportive of districts that have a very high rate of poverty, which I'm not telling you anything you don't know, include your own. Special education. Special education is the exception. Special education is not based on an actual count of students. So everything I've set up until now is based on actual bodies who sit in actual desks in your town. Um, special education that is not the case with. Um, in this case, what the state does is it runs a flat percentage of your whole enrollment. For out-of-district special education, it says that's one percent of your student population. For in-district special education for this current year, it says it's three point eight three percent. Um, if you were a reg- a VOTAC, it would be four point eight three. This number, the three point eight three, is the fourth part of the Student Opportunity Act. It's the fourth thing that's changing. This is phasing in over the next five years. Um, it will eventually be four percent when we get to the fifth year. So the count effectively then, or the count, to put it in quotation marks, will be phased in over the next several years. Now, I preface all of that because sometimes people get really excited when they see the dollar amounts, because of course, obviously, these are significantly higher, um, but they have nothing to do with the number of students that you have on IMPs. Nothing to do with the number of students who are receiving special education services. Um, this is, the percentages are based on, um, the state's look into their own database as to what would happen if we took all of the students who were receiving services, most of whom, of course, received services only part-time, right? They largely are in integrated classrooms, um, and made those students full-time special education students. The calculation of the state is that that would, that would effectively equal four percent of the dis- of the statewide population of students. We can dispute that, we can like it, we can not like it, but that is what it is. Um, so again, just to note that that's actually where this is coming from. So if you're putting those pieces together, um, the first thing that happens is that you get the base, um, foundation calculations, right? Kinda, how many kindergartners do you have? Here's the dollar amount. How many elementary school students do you have? Here's the dollar amount and so forth through. To that gets added, how many English learners do you have of each of those three grade levels? Again, multiplied by those three dollar amounts. Same thing with your low increment. Your low increment, um, is based on the percentage of students that you have that are considered low-income, and then multiplied by the number of students that that actually is. And then the special education percentage times your, um, your district enrollment, and that then will give you your foundation budget. So this is your current FY twenty-two foundation budget as calculated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education this past June. So the DESI actually calculates these twice. Does it once when the governor's budget comes out in January, and then once we finagle our way through the legislative process, there inevitably are some changes, um, not always in terms of this, but sometimes in terms of some other pieces. Um, and then DESI actually then sends out a second calculation in July, and this is based on the, this is, comes right from the July calculation. This is not exactly what the spreadsheet looks like, but this gives you all of the data within the spreadsheet. You can see here, count, the count of your students, the dollar amount per pupil, um, and then the dollar amount that that totals. Couple of notes here. Um, I did drop any categories that you didn't have anyone in, so you run full-day K. We don't need a line for half-day K. You don't have vocational students. Um, please also note that anything that's in italics, those students are already included in the count above, right? They all have a base foundation count, so don't try to total the enrollment column all the way down.
The base there, low income twelve, the others are, like, nine, twelve, six to eight. What's the twelve of a low income? Twelve actual students are requiring eight million dollars?
No, that's, um.
Is the category?
That's K, that's, that's, uh, one through twelve. That should, she, um.
Just says twelve.
Right, so low income again gets calculated across the district, but.
So that's the entire low income, um.
Yep.
Number for K through twelve.
Correct.
The second line says enrollment, so it's fifteen hundred sixty-five.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks. Yeah, all right.
Way down. Um, that's not actually how that math works. Um, and then the thirty-one point nine million dollars is what the state would say per Mass General Law, Chapter Seventy, is the fair and adequate minimum that's needed to fund the Southbridge Public Schools for FY twenty-three. You will note, by the way, that I continue to use the fair and adequate minimum quotation because we can talk about whether or not that's actually accurate at some point. Now, I wanted to call your attention to a couple of data points that really matter. When the state calculates your foundation budget, there historically have really only been two ways that it changes. The first is the inflation rate, which changes from year to year, and the second is your actual student enrollment. So that's first of all, just the total enrollment, how many students do you have overall? And then the enrollment with each of those categories, right? Do you have more English learners? That's gonna boost that increment. Do you have fewer kids who are low-income? That's gonna drop that increment. Everything except for your special education, which of course only depends on your overall enrollment. So I thought it would be useful, this goes back to nineteen eighty-four, which is far, as far back as the, um, the state's database goes, which is exactly when education reform actually came into existence. This is actually what your overall student enrollment has looked like since nineteen ninety-four. Um, and I always find this informative for districts to look at. Most of us who've been around districts probably have some sense as to what our kind of recent trend is, but what has our, what has the trend looked like over time? And then what does that end up actually meaning for your district? Um, so really effectively here, this is kind of the story of Southbridge in terms of the enrollment for K through twelve education. Um, keeping in mind that, you know, some of the high heights here are up around almost twenty-seven hundred students. Um, you're now at about eighteen hundred students. Um, you have been dropping a bit over the past number of years, although I would say that really the, the big drop actually happened in the early two thousands. Um, that is a go- that is something that impacts your foundation budget, right? That, that actually, the number of students that are actually sitting in seats impacts the calculation that the state makes um, in terms of the dollar amounts that are needed. The other thing that I thought was really, really interesting, and this is, um, to me, as someone who lives in Worcester, central Massachusetts person who's been certainly been paying attention to Southbridge for, for a bit, um, to me, these numbers were actually some of the ones that were really most telling. So first of all, purple here is English learners. Um, going back again to nineteen ninety-four, you had English learner numbers of seven percent, six percent. You had a couple of high years in there of twelve or thirteen percent, but pretty steady really all the way into the, the two thousand, almost two thousand ten, when you then start to see more of a steady increase, occasional drop back. But you've had several years in which fully, a qu- almost fully a quarter of your student body, um, are considered English learners. And remember, that's not anyone whose first language isn't English. That's anyone who currently is considered by the state to still be learning English, which is a different calculation. Your first language other than English numbers, of course, are considerably higher. So I think, I thought to, first of all, that that was a, that's a really important story first, yes, in terms of the dollar amounts, but in terms of what the district then is, is needing to provide for students, that's a substantial change to go from a seven percent English learner ca- um, pr- population to one that's more like twenty percent or twenty-four percent.
So, if I may, so the, do you see the numbers increasing from like two thousand and ten up? My son, for a while, for the first three years in elementary school, was considered an English language learner because he wasn't meeting the proficiencies that he needed to meet at that time. Um, because there, there, sometimes there are some issues developmental delays, so, you know, he worked his way out of it, but, so just because the number's up there, the number of English language learners doesn't necessarily mean second language, but it also attributes, if you look at the, if you correlate the, the metrics of English language learners to our performance in the English MCAS, especially in the earlier years, you'll see that our numbers go down as those numbers go up. So that, that, this doesn't necessarily say that like we have a high, you know, alternative language-speaking population. It also kind of contributes to where may not be necessarily educating, the curriculum may not be there for some of these students to properly be learning the language.
Did the standards change from pre-two thousand and ten beyond so that the measured, measured rates increased because of the, how they're being tested, what they're expected to learn changed?
And also if a different testing measurement in the system itself is also implemented to get you a more accurate number.
And who's doing the teaching, how it's being taught?
Right, so.
So, I, that, that's, me, like, it could be a very apples and oranges factor there. Can go back to method, what you're teaching. When, around last meeting, someone, we were reading some of the previous notes about fads or whatever, and I maybe, or maybe think this reminds me of that aspect of, okay, did we, was it a fad that we chose some other teaching, uh, method that was supposed to be improved? Is this a result of changing a curriculum that, that was good and, you know? Somebody's tied to it, you know, there's a lot of reasons to change curriculum.
But for the budgetary side of things, the, the whole premise is if you have to fit, like, for us being put on the receivership because we were chronically underperforming, especially in the elementary levels, this tracks as far as when the state started paying attention to us because they saw the numbers jumping. And what this, that, the reason why it's incorporated is because it helps us be able to isolate those issues with additional financial resources. That's what the whole point of the Student Opportunity Act was, you know? It's just something that I, we, I had discussed with her after, because I did have a couple of questions outside, um, that I followed up with while I was chair, that she was able to answer, so I wanted to make sure you had that information as well.
Well, like, I appreciate you telling me about your son in particular, but, uh, I, it's, I don't know if it seems like it should be straightforward that people who are, who are, are born in this country, in the state, are generally, that first language, at least then, was English, right? Yeah, there's gonna be some developmental issues that happens in any age.
Yeah.
Or any, any, whatever statistics. So, so it seems hard not to point to, you know, a specific category of people for your increase in this area. I, I don't know.
But that's why I wanted to provide the additional context of.
Right, for that, for that, that one example.
Well, that's, but the test isn't just, wasn't just for my kid. It's a test that, that, that they had actually.
Yeah, sure, everybody has to pass it.
Well, when he took it, was the first year of receivership when he was in, in, uh, first grade. Was his, that was the first year of receivership, and that the first time, they didn't give him this test when we went for the transition from preschool to K. To see where he's at. They didn't test his language. Head Start did and provided some info, but the district didn't at the time.
So then in your son's instance, was it then a, like you said, a delayed, uh, growth thing? Or your experience was that he, he wasn't taught enough to, to reach the level he was supposed to?
So there was, my, my thoughts on it are the results of the test that considered him an English learner. The, the, he took a test and the results were from the education he had gotten from the system that he was still learning the language, even though my wife and I speak.
Yeah.
Very goo- very good English. Very, very good English, English very good. But, you know, we, you know, we, we went through our own, you know, we went through the school system. We were, we were taught, she was an English language learner when she was younger, but, because her parents were immigrated here from Russia. So, but, she learned the language, got booted off of it, you know, off of that, but, and was out of, you know, integrated into the classroom. But the fact that these tests were given to the students, and when the, when the state started monitoring this, when we started to go into the underperforming districts, which according to the law is, you're supposed to get a three-year turnaround plan that you create on your own accord. Before that, you get a, you get a two-year improvement plan period that you have when you're determined to just be underperforming, not chronically underperforming. But that's when the state comes in and says, hey, you know, you should use, you measure with these and this, and they try to assist you in improving your district. And that would have happened, that data, those data measures would have started happening in two thousand and ten.
And so what did we see when the state recommended a change?
Well, that's where you see immediately a three point six percent, if you look up there, three point six percent jump. When the state starts collaborating, when we're underperforming, at ten point seven. And it never gets below ten percent. Two thousand and eleven came down, but after that, it never dropped. So there's, in two thousand and fifteen, she's got it starred, which she'll review. That's when we went under receivership. So you can see that the numbers kept increasing even over time, even though we had the data to go, we have a lot of English learners, what can we do to fix the curriculum? So it's, this is just for the budget, but at the end of the day, as that number goes down, so does our foundation required, budget requirements.
Right, right.
Which is a good thing, but can also negatively affect. But I wanted to try, try to add a little more context to those numbers going up.
The special education has stayed fairly constant. There's been a couple of bounces down, but by and large, your special education population has stayed around twenty-two or twenty-three percent. So about a fifth of your students are considered special education. Not atypical, I would say that for most districts, it's somewhere around eighteen percent. So you're not really far off in terms of that. And then this is the one that I actually, when I plotted it out and opened up the chart again, really, really kind of almost took my breath away. Back in nineteen ninety-four, your low income count was less than forty percent. Right now, your low income count is eighty-four point six percent. That is a, a huge, huge, huge difference for this district to be coping with. And as someone who has, you know, been concerned about some of the decisions the state has made around districts like Southbridge, to me, this, this graph tells an incredible story. Particularly when you then think about the fact that the state for the past twenty years has been catastrophically underfunding districts like Southbridge that are predominantly dependent on state aid. So this is a, you are a low income district in a town that is unable to fully fund its schools, as we'll talk about in a second, that has had this kind of change in your student body population. That's huge in terms of the changes that this district has seen. Yes?
I'm just wondering, um, how much of that poverty, excuse me, poverty level statistic could be affected by the rising point at which we're determining the poverty level?
So that's what the green star is, right? So the drop that you see from fourteen to fifteen is when you actually effectively flipped over to community eligibility. So that's where you lost the numbers. The steady gain since then has been the state attempting to capture more and more of those students again. So what I, what I also will tell you is that if you look at the state's calculations in terms of how many of the students in the state of Massachusetts are considered low income, your trajectory here does not track the state's. This is, this is something beyond that that's happening. I'm really glad you asked that question, but, and, and I think it's an important one. Particularly, honestly, if you look at from two thousand and nineteen forward. I mean, that increase there from seventy percent, a full fifteen percent within these last handful of years, that's huge. That's huge. So in terms of, if you ask me which chart is kind of burned into my brain after putting this presentation together, really, it's your low income count that has stayed with me. So now, those numbers together are what create your foundation budget, right? The number of students you have, the number of students you have that are English learners, the number that are low income. And then with the increment that is, the percentage that is described as special education. And I thought it would be useful just for you to get some picture here of what does that end up meaning in terms of your foundation budget? What the state considers a fair and adequate minimum? So for the current year, we talked about thirty-one point nine million dollars. But last year, it was twenty-eight point seven. There have been years where it's been twenty-eight or twenty-seven dollars, twenty-seven million dollars. And then looking back towards FY eleven and FY twelve, you're talking more like twenty-two or twenty-three million dollars. Do notice though, and this is actually the thing that I'm going to say this a couple of times, in different ways. The, from last year to this year, the jump in your foundation budget here is not your enrollment. It's partly that your poverty count increased, but more than anything else, it's the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. Because we did not have the Student Opportunity Act implemented last year. We saw a big jump in the dollar amounts ascribed to each student who was considered low income. That is that jump in your foundation budget. That's entirely where that came from. So to me, you, part of your story in terms of your budget is that you are one of the districts for which the Student Opportunity Act, first of all, was intended. And secondly, you are already seeing, even if it's not coming through in dollars of aid received yet, although I will show you in a second that it is actually. It's, from here on out, those numbers are only going to continue to add up. Partly because your poverty count is so high, which puts you all the way over in category twelve. Now, I do also want to note that something that's been happening over those years in particular, in which your poverty count has particularly gone through the ceiling, is that while the state was sort of dithering about whether or not they were going to pass the Student Opportunity Act, right? Foundation Budget Recommission came out with a report back in two thousand and fifteen saying, you know, you guys revised the foundation budget in nineteen ninety-three and you haven't done anything since. What has been happening since then is that Massachusetts effectively has been kind of falling off the chart in terms of the two things that the, that the foundation budget was designed to count, to make up for. Chapter seventy is supposed to be a school funding system that provides adequacy and provides progressive funding. It's supposed to provide additional support for districts and for students that most need it in districts that are least able to provide it. This chart actually shows you what has been happening to the progressivity of the Massachusetts Foundation Formula as a state. In terms of how well is Massachusetts doing for making sure that their most needy students have the most amount of support? We've kind of fallen off the wagon since two thousand and fifteen there at the end of the chart. This chart and the information here is taken from a, from a report that actually just came out last week. Every couple of years, the Shankar Institute issues the Adequacy and Fairness of State School Finance Systems. This is their most recent edition, which is based on two thousand and nineteen finance data. Now, why that's key for Massachusetts is nineteen was the last year that we, that we did this prior to the signing of the Student Opportunity Act. Now, twenty, we kind of considered a nothing year because we had the pandemic and nothing changed in terms of the budget. But nineteen, but two thousand and nineteen is sort of the, the last regular year. And it, this is really a demonstration of how badly this was needed. Just to read these, these two pieces of information. Massachusetts ranks forty-third in the nation out of forty-nine in terms of effort, which is, given how much we have as a state, how much of that do we put towards schools? The answer is not as much as most other places. And we're forty-second out of forty-nine in terms of progressivity. Now, in particular, the progressivity.
Where she's headed for me, but this makes sense. If you can show me that there's a, there's a, there's evidence that shows that the more money you spend, the better student you get. And we know that's not true. So this to me is, we need to spend more money. Money we don't have, but if we spent more money, we'd get results. That's, that's a fallacy from the start.
Well, again, she's citing a, she's citing somebody, uh, somebody that did a study.
Right, she agrees with that, otherwise she wouldn't bring it up.
Well, it's.
It's part of her argument.
Will change as the Student Opportunity Act is implemented. But I do think that it's important for you all, and really, any district that looks like yours, to know these numbers. Because this is the reality that you have been living, which is that you've had increasing amounts of need. You have had, what everybody has told you is increasing amounts of funding. But when you actually look at the amount the state has been putting towards this, how hard the state has been trying, and whether or not the dollars are actually following the need, the data says that it hasn't actually been coming through. So I think that's really important for you to know. Now, this is actually the, the old slide, but what I'm going to talk to you about here is, given that thirty-one point nine million dollars, that is supposed to be your fair and adequate minimum, how much of that, then, looking at the second half of Section One of Chapter Seventy-One, is supposed to come from the town of Southbridge? And how much of that is going to come from the state? So the first thing that I think is good for everybody to understand is that the state has a basic understanding. When it goes to calculate the amount of funding for the entire Commonwealth, that the foundation budget for all K through twelve students in Massachusetts that are in public and charter systems is going to be funded fifty-nine percent from local funding and forty-one percent from state funding. So if you take the foundation budget for the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the state says, okay, we're going to pick up forty-one percent of that, and it's going to be up to cities and towns to pick up the other fifty-nine. Now, that's the state calculation. How much, how that breaks down locally is what actually then happens next in terms of the calculation. So given that overall, the state then looks at two things. It starts by looking at the property wealth in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The term that, that we use here is equalized valuation, which is the cash value of all taxable property in each municipality. The state adds that up from DOR, the whole state. And then effectively does the same thing for income. Taking a look at the income that was derived annually from Department of Revenue filings. So how much income is there in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? The state takes those two statewide numbers, and it does a little calculation from, if you remember from when you learned decimals, you might be familiar with. It sets them equal to each other, okay? So what that means is that one of these is going to be less than one, and one of them is going to be more than one. That's how you set them equal to each other. Now, out of this calculation, the only thing the state's going to walk away with that matters for the local level is these two decimals. Because it's going to take these two decimals, and it's going to then apply those to the town level income and property for every city and town in Massachusetts. And that's how we end up with what it says is it's a standard applicable calculation to every city and town. Because it uses the same decimals for everybody, regardless of their level of income and wealth. So let's walk you through how it works. So when the state is actually trying to figure out how much Southbridge can afford to contribute, the first thing it's going to look at is your equalized property valuation, right? Just for the town of Southbridge. And it's going to look at your income, again, just for the town of Southbridge. You'll notice that these are a little bit out of phase, so this is what they did for two thousand, for FY twenty-two, the current fiscal year. They used the twenty-twenty equalized property valuation and the two thousand and nineteen income valuation. The reason is, sometimes people dispute their taxes, and the state tries to have something that's not being changed too much. It then multiplies each of those by those standum, standard decimals that we talked about, right? That they derived from the state calculation. The uniform property percentage, the uniform income percentage. Then, given those calculations, you end up with the local effort from property wealth and the local effort for income for the town of Southbridge. So what is that, just to show you that a different way, okay? The, the map here, one point two billion dollars in property wealth, three hundred and sixty-nine million dollars in income wealth, times that standard percentage in both cases. And then take those two dollar amounts and add them together, that gives you what's known as your combined effort yield. Now, if you'll allow me to geek out for a second. The combined effort yield is actually kind of neat, because what it mean, what it does is it gives us a way of measuring ability to contribute for districts that, for towns that are totally not like each other, right? There's no way to compare the town of Southbridge's ability to contribute to the city of Worcester's ability to contribute, or the city of Boston's ability to contribute. But if you take a town's combined effort yield, and you compare it to the foundation budget of that city or town, and set that up as a ratio, you then have a way of saying, here's how much this town can contribute to their local school district. And that actually give you, gives you a standard way of having the conversation. There are districts that their combined effort yield multiple times exceeds their school's foundation budget. If you look at this, I don't need to tell you any further, right? Thirty-one point nine million dollars was your foundation budget? The state's saying that you can afford nine point two. Guess what? That's why we have Chapter Seventy-Eight, okay? But do keep in mind, this is a way of being able to have a standard conversation across the state to talk about need versus ability to contribute. And this is really, that's Section One of Chapter Seventy, the standard local funding effort applicable to every city and town in the Commonwealth. So, in terms of getting, I've got a, a nine million dollars that's just living here, it's not phasing in as it should, sorry about that. So the first thing that's going to happen is that, um, the state, we're going to take that nine million dollars, and we're going to compare it to eighty-two point five percent of your foundation budget, which is the most that any town or city has to contribute towards their district. The, the state effectively puts a cap on it. Now, you can contribute more, but in terms of what you're required to contribute. The state then looks at how much Southbridge had to contribute last year. And then it looks at how close that is to your target contribution. So effectively, then, what's going to happen is the state then does a calculation to say, given the town of Southbridge's ability to contribute this current year, what did you contribute last year? What has happened in your local economy? That actually gives you your target, and then the state will bring you up or down to say, well, here's how much you actually contribute, can contribute. You'll notice that this is actually really not all that different from what you already had. These are what the numbers actually are. So it's a, it's a matter of thirteen thousand dollars in terms of the change. Your economy, incidentally, grew this past year two point nine six percent. So that's sort of the additional little calculation that's happening in here, that's the municipal revenue calculation in terms of looking at how much was required last year versus how much is required this year. So in terms of putting the pieces together, right? To get to your foundation budget, the state always starts with your local ability to contribute. What this, what the Commonwealth is going to do is it says that you have to contribute that amount to your local schools. Now, you'll notice that when we're talking about K through twelve for the town, for the Southbridge Public Schools, you aren't getting the whole nine million dollars we just talked about, because some of that nine million dollars is your local contribution to Bay Path. They get calculated into the town's foundation budget too. So there is a, the foundation budget for the town of Southbridge exists separate from the Southbridge Public Schools, because the town of Southbridge feeds into two different foundation budgets. So the first thing, though, to put together your K through twelve foundation budget is your local required contribution, which is eight point two million dollars. And then the state fills in the gap in order to get you up to your thirty-one. Which is how you end up getting twenty-three million dollars in Chapter Seventy-Eight. Okay, so that's how you get to your foundation budget. You are a district that is, of course, predominantly state-funded. But the state is saying that they are aiming to, for you to be contributing twenty-five point eight nine percent this current fiscal year towards your foundation budget, the state fills in the gap. Now, one of the things that I like to illustrate for districts, particularly now that we are having this sort of changing time in how these pieces come together, is, is some look at how those two pieces have varied over time. And in particular, how those two pieces have changed, again, looking back at your enrollment changes, and what that ended up meaning for your state contribution. And what I mean is this, last year, if I had done this presentation for you, I would have needed to include a section where we talked about hold harmless and minimum contribution, okay? So the state's general principle underlying Chapter Seventy-Eight is that if you are a district where, once we do that calculation we just did, the amount of Chapter Seventy-Eight that you would be getting for this fiscal year is less than you would have gotten last fiscal year, the state will not give you less. The state will give you the same amount. And then written right into the Student Opportunity Act is a requirement that the state then increase is a requirement that the state then increase any district that's getting that same amount by a thirty dollar per pupil increase. That was your state last year. It is not where you're at this year. And again, the reason, and this is actually why I gave you your foundation budget, is because of the increase in your foundation budget, which is a result of the increase in that calculation due to the Student Opportunity Act. So if we look at what your local required contribution has been over time, and then we add to that the chapter seventy-eight, you'll see that obviously the chapter seventy-eight increases have been the part that has been particularly growing more so than the local contribution. First, I think that's always a healthy thing for school committees to know. We do tend to sometimes get some pushback from our municipal side about increases on their side. There are always increases on their side. But generally in districts like yours, where you are predominantly state-funded, largely most of the increase is usually being picked up by the state. And then this is the part that I think is particularly important, because this is actually where your foundation budget is. And if you look back at FY twenty, your foundation budget was less than the amount that your local contribution plus your state aid was. That's what was, the, the top of the yellow bar is if, is what your state, what the state calls your required net school spending. How much are you required as a town to spend on K through twelve education? Most of the time, as you see, the green line hits the top of the yellow bar, and that's because you're a hundred percent funded educate, funded district. But in FY twenty, because the state wanted to make sure that you didn't receive less aid than you'd gotten the year before, again, I, that has to do with your declining enrollment, they had funded you at the same level. Your net school spending was above your foundation budget. You were required to spend more than your foundation budget because the state had increased your state aid anyway. But if you notice then, the total yellow bars have now continued to go up, again, mostly because of the increases in those internal dollar calculations, because the phase in the new state law. And your foundation budget is going up actually first with it. And so you're not a hold harmless district. So rather than being a district that's seeing, I think, I wanna say that it was something like seventy-eight thousand dollars was an increase in state aid that you had one of these recent years, you're instead seeing increases that are in the hundred thousand dollar additional kinds of amounts. And those are going to be continuing to increase at greater extent over the next several years because of the Student Opportunity Act. So I did wanna actually add that part because you're not necessarily seeing the dollar increases yet in terms of the chapter seventy-eight. But you are one of the districts, and I'm gonna point to you because like, I, I've been making this argument to districts across the state, that this is something that's gonna happen. There are districts that are gonna pull themselves out of a hold harmless as a result of SOA. You are the first district where I run the calculation and said, aha, it actually has happened. So that is gonna make a difference to you in terms of what your state aid is gonna look like in the coming years.
I have a question.
Yes, absolutely.
So, can you go back to that last slide?
Absolutely. Sorry, there we go.
That's okay. So I'm looking at the foundation budget. So if we, you know, I know this might sound crazy, but I'm just curious. So the local contributions, right? If, if we voted on a, on a budget to increase our local contributions, would the state take funding away from-
No.
So that would exceed, that would exceed the-
Yes. And so in fact, you're, you're, you, you are looking ahead to what this slide is actually going to be. So for your, for your FY twenty-one, which was last fiscal year, because I always wanna do one where the numbers are all settled, this is actually what your calculation looked like. You had eight point two million dollars that were your required local contribution. You had twenty-three point six, that was the, um, state aid. You actually had six point four million dollars that came in your revolving fund. Actually, you know, I think I might be using twenty-two numbers here on the bottom, but you'll still get the idea. The, the green and the top bar are gonna be the twenty-one numbers. I'll need to go back and redo this chart, cause I think I'm using this year's numbers on the bottom. You actually exceeded required net school spending by one point four million dollars in local contribution. So the town of Southbridge contributed an additional one point four million dollars over what they were required to. Now, to get super technical, that you then spent within the categories that are recognized by net school spending. They're probably, because I know that you run things like school buses, which doesn't count towards that school spending, was actually additional above this. But yes, most, um, towns and cities in Massachusetts contribute more than they are required to, to their local school districts. In fact, in two thousand nineteen, the statewide average was thirty-one percent. Now, obviously that's not the reality in which you live, but thirty-one percent over their required local contributions.
So, so then the state, when they calculate the, uh, when they calculate what the, the spending needs to be year after year after year, whatever we contribute isn't gonna take away from what funding might be provided by the state?
Correct. That is its own separate, so there is a reporting mechanism, that, that's really where this, this, this information came from. There is a reporting mechanism where the district reports back to the state and says, here's how much was actually reported, it's called the end of year report, goes in, it's usually due in October. But that has nothing to do with the calculation that they do. The calculation they do is always just based on what is the, what do you have for enrollment in your district? What are the dollar amounts per student? And then the calculations we said, what are the proper taxes, what are the income taxes, what are the standard calculations? Yep? So you do not harm yourself by funding over, over what you're required to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, now I'm looking at this chart that's gonna bother me, but those are FY twenty-two numbers on the bottom. They, they have shifted a bit again because of the Student Opportunity Act. I will redo this one before I send it to you. So that is really honestly the story that I have for you this evening. And I'm happy to take whatever other questions you may have. With, incidentally, the ongoing caveat that it's entirely possible that you may walk away and have questions tomorrow, which is why I gave you my contact information.
So, um, the rat, the, um, I'm gonna send the link out to you for the video, so if you wanna watch the commentary and figure out what questions. That contact information for her is still good because she is still over the finance side of things and she is still over the, uh, she's still over Central Mass. So, uh, actually, she's one of the people that Martine has been talking with in regards with MASC. I mean, she's reached out more towards Glenn and the higher, the higher, the higher-ups in MASC, but first point of contact is Tracy, cause she actually lives in Worcester. She was a Worcester School Committee member at one point as well. But this is her specialty, is the finance side of things.
She looks familiar, was that that training that we had to go to in, uh, Bay Path? I think I recognize her, yeah.
Yeah, so she, even though Bay Path is Voke, she's still responsible for that side of the finance too. So that's actually, it's good that you guys met, she's cool. She's, she's a great, she's, she's a good individual and she's more than willing to answer any questions you may have, whether you're sitting at, holding the gavel as a chair, or just a member, or just curious, so. I'll open it up, if you guys got questions, then I might be able to try and answer for you, or-
I thought it was very interesting, I always, I'm just, like I said, I'm curious how this works. I think this is a little old though, cause what is this, we're already-
So we're in FY twenty-four right now, so this is only two-
Well, we're working on twenty-five.
We're proposing the twenty-five budget, yes.
It might be a good idea for this to be updated, but I did find it very fascinating, yep, how it works.
Yeah, it, it's a short notice that I could do for a training, cause I'd love for her to come back out here.
No, it was good, it was-
Oh, yeah, I know, because I know, if she comes out here, it's probably gonna be with updated numbers. So.
It's not the numbers per se, I mean, you can read trends, but the, how they get to the numbers won't change, so.
What are the numbers this year?
Um, that, Dr. Ballard, the FY twenty-five budget, I think was in the thirty-four or thirty-five million dollar range, or maybe wrong, might be a little bit higher, but again, that increase is coming, you know, from the Student Opportunity Act. Because a twenty twenty, FY twenty-seven is the last year of that implementation. So once we hit twenty-seven, the numbers will just vary based on enrollment and inflation. And then obviously those other subsets of students, like pre-K, you know, K through five, pre-K.
What's its intended purpose?
As far as the increases, um-
Student Opportunity Act, was it?
That's what changes, that's what she reviewed, changes the budget to provide for more, um, more state funding for districts that have a high population of low to median income students or special needs students. Because there is, there is also, what she didn't review in there, part of the Student Opportunity Act also lowers what they call the circuit breaker. So when you have a student that is he- in your, if, uh, every student that lives in Southbridge, we are responsible for. Every student aged child in Southbridge, we are responsible for, as far as funding. When you have students with severe special needs, where they have to go to specific, you know, the, the programs or staff or facilities in the district just can't handle those students, especially when you have like severe autistic or people with severe physical disabilities, we still have to pay for their education, including their transportation. Which for us, it gets very expensive, cause special needs school is in Worcester. So what it did was, there's a number that the state had set for how much you can pay for, uh, students' transportation for special needs. And that number's very high for a lot of, for just in general. Districts like Boston and Worcester, where money practically grows on trees, they don't see it, but Southbridge, where we're trying to squeeze a nickel out of a penny, you know, that hurt us, so that circuit breaker was reduced, which actually helped. When they hit that circuit breaker, the state takes over. It's like, alright, you definitely can't afford it, we're gonna fund that student's transportation. That helped us because we did have student, we did have students in the district that needed to be transported elsewhere for education, and we were talking hundreds of thousands dollars for select students in transportation alone. Now that the state's taking that up, that's additional funding that we can actually budget elsewhere for salaries, curriculum, fit trip, nude painting, you know, whatever the case may be. So there, there's a lot more in the Student Opportunity Act. There's a lot more fiscal changes that only benefit Southbridge because of our small community, the, the size of our community, the size of our enrollment, the low valuation of our property, the low income. This is geared towards us. But to be fair, Southbridge pays about nine, ten million dollars a year for a district that costs thirty million to operate. The state's paying for the rest, we're not the only districts that, you know, fall into that kind of subset. Hudson has a similar students' population size. They only have like, I think it was twelve percent less from the state. So the state accounts for sixty-three percent of their foundation. But the local also contributes an extra thirty percent. They have the money in Hudson to do it. So they end up spending above and beyond consistently every year, but there were the closest that I could find, that Tracy found in a previous one, and that I could still find consistently keeps up with our student size, student body size.
Nothing like Oxford, or?
Oxford only has, Oxford, I think, has less students than we do. Webster has more than we do, they have like twenty-seven hundred students, twenty-eight hundred students, we only have eighteen. Nine hundred kids is a school. So like, that, so there's, the, the, it changes a lot, but, and there's a lot of, the Student Opportunity Act helped update a thirty-year-old founding law. Cause I don't know if you noticed, but prices have drastically changed in thirty years, especially in the way of curriculums and the requirements that we have to have to pay out for pensions. Because we still have those commitments that we need to pay. And people retire. And when you have longstanding staff that spends twenty years, you have fifteen people that spend the same twenty years and they're out, we have to pay fifteen pensions at the same time as we're trying to hire fifteen new teachers. So, um. If, do you have any other questions?
No, that's it.
Any other questions? Alright, so next agenda items to schedule the next meeting date? I would tentatively say probably May twenty-first, after our school committee meeting. I'm gonna try, I've, I've already got, I've already emailed out to MASC, including Tracy, but also Glenn and Mildred, who's president right now, um, to see if we can't get, um, somebody to come out here and just do pointed budget training as far as, um, I would like to see some, how to break down a line item budget since the receiver did just give us the budget book, but trying to understa- I know, I know how to read a line item budget, I'm kinda familiar with it, cause I've been doing it for years, but I know the general population isn't necessarily there. So I would like to try to get some of that and make it a public meeting so everybody can learn. Um, it, does that date conflict with anything that's there, May twenty-first?
Yeah.
Alright, um.
So will you be confirming that, so I just put it to that's potential?
Uh, I would, I would say that is our next date, unless I have to say otherwise. And I will, you know, confirm if there's any issues, I'll let you know well in advance. Not like this last rash of, oh, by the way, the, nothing was set up and we need to be. So seeing that, um, do I have a motion to adjourn? Alright, I'll second all of those in favor. Is unanimous of all present, meeting is adjourned at seven forty-six.